We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor McLean, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we ask that your blessings today as we go about our business for our great city. Please share your blessings with each and every council person as they make their decisions tonight, and that the discussions and decisions made are the ones that will make our city prosper and grow. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless each and every one of us tonight and pray that we will continue to do the good deeds for this great city and for everyone around them. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Low.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I'd like to remove Mike Flynn from the privilege of the floor and add Communication Number 19 from Mike Flynn.
Second. The motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda removing Mike Flynn from privilege of the floor and adding Communication Number 19, which is a communication from Mike Flynn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Under privilege of the floor, we have Michelle Suttrell regarding taxi licensing. Is Michelle here? Is Michelle here? Nobody's jumping up, so we'll move on to John Schneider regarding the budget. I'll remind all of our speakers this evening, council rules allow for three minutes under privilege of the floor, and we ask that you state your name and address for the record.
John Schneider, 2325 Wales Avenue, Lima, Ohio. I'm a member of various community organizations. Tonight, I am speaking as an individual, and in my favorite role, a volunteer and a citizen of Lima, concerning the budget and community policing initiative of the Lima Police Department. Several years ago, we were not only policing substations in various areas of the city, but federal funding for additional officers. In time, funding from the national government for community policing declined and was eliminated. The need for community policing is as great today as it ever was. The proposal of the Lima Police Department is modest in size and thoughtful in design, is likely to cause greater community -- excuse me, is likely to cause greater community police relationship building with an emphasis on problem solving, relationship building and problem solving. Community policing or neighborhood policing is not a social service program or a gimmick. This is real law enforcement activity to improve public safety and citizen confidence in the community. Community policing is not a panacea, but is a positive action for our city. The Lima community has many issues related to police-community relations. There are issues of possible mediation of disputes, revisiting the function of the Citizens' Review Committee, clarifying recruitment and hiring practices, and dialogue about pinpoint policing. All these issues are important. Community policing does not have to wait until all the other issues and concerns are resolved. There's a growing consensus supportive of the community policing initiative. The time for action is now, not to wait until a crisis happens we always something had been done. The time for action is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Next, under privilege of the floor is Clevin Jones regarding the Ministerial Alliance on Policing. Mr. Johnson.
Mr. President, council members at large, my name is Clevin Jones, 1006 State Street, Lima, Ohio. On behalf of the Lima area Black Minister Alliance, we thank you for this privilege of allowing us to address council as a whole. We are here because there is a toxic tone in our nation and in our community as it relates to law enforcement and the African-American community. As clergy and as leaders in this community, we feel that it is our civic, moral, and spiritual obligation to be proactive in addressing certain issues. But let us be clear, we do not oppose professional policing or any law enforcement for that matter that is intended to keep our community safe, nor do we condone violence against police officers in any way nor for any reason. What we are opposed to is law enforcement that borders on the line of harassment, abuse of authority, disrespect, humiliation, and law enforcement that has the appearance of racial profiling. Our concerns tonight are threefold at this time. Pinpoint policing is one. It has been stated recently that pinpoint policing is a data-driven and not a personality-driven procedure. However, in the African-American community, it is perceived as nothing more than veiled racial profiling. These areas of the city that has been deemed high crime, where pinpoint policing is thought to be necessary, law-abiding citizens should not be subject to abusive police tactics or abusive behaviors. Concern number two, community-oriented policing. We held a rally in the square recently, and we expressed our concerns and our desire to bring community-oriented policing back to our community, to better relationships between law enforcement and the African-American community. At the time, Chief Martin thought that the funding wasn't available to support this idea. However, we are pleased to see that the city administration and the police department has found the funds to make this a reality. And finally, of major importance, is the revitalization of the Citizens' Review Board. The past board was a good idea, but the process was flawed. Former members have stated that along with other issues, a lack of guidance, direction, and support caused the board to eventually dissolve. If a review board is going to be effective, and if we are going to put a coalition together that monitors police action involving the public, this coalition must have the resources, the funding, and at a minimum, the authority to recommend punishment for egregious violations and behavior. We came tonight in an honest attempt to be proactive and not reactive, and we would certainly encourage a much broader discussion on each of these issues. Thank you for your time and for your attentiveness. It is our desire, as an alliance, to make Lima the great city that it is and a great place to live. God bless your efforts as elected officials, and may God bless the city of Lima. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, do we have the consent calendar? Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that Item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
And Item B, C, and D be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve Item A, and to receive and file Items B, C, and D. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Spiriton for home loan originator.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I'm moving to Communication Number One, receive and file. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into contract with three property maintenance service providers.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I'm moving to Communication Number Two, receive and file. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Community -- I'm sorry, yes, from the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to advertise and contract for preparation of the five-year consolidated plan.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I'm moving to Communication Number Three, receive and file. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to exempt Lima Allen County paramedics from Chapter 840, Section B, Item Four of the codified ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Four be received and filed.
Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? I've got a question. Does this require legislation, or is this a matter of policy?
It does not require legislation. However, you should probably receive, file, and approve if council is okay with the piece and with the exception.
Okay. All right. Gordon, you want to restate your motion?
Yeah. I move that Communication Number Four be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Utilities requesting legislation to enter into an agreement with Azteca Systems Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I'm moving the Communication Number Five be received and filed, and authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Five, and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for purchase of land servers.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Allen County.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received, filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the United Way regarding Community Grant Writer Initiative resolving a grant for Head Start.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I'm moving to Communication Number Eight, received. Communication Number Eight, received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Eight. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Ms. Adams.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the President of the United Way, Mr. Haney, to give us an update. Through the process of the CBGG funding, money was allocated for a grant writer for the community, and from that is our -- this is the first payback of being awarded LACCA for Head Start Program, $941,000. And it states here that it will help more than 80 children, zero to three years of age, in their families, to benefit from an early education. So hopefully, there'll be more coming of this good news, but this is a great start. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn.
I was going to echo the same thing, that this is very exciting when we see $941,000 there, and I know we all want to make sure that we knew how the grant writer was going to be, how the money was coming in, how they were spending the money, and this is great. And I got a phone call for it today, and some staff members was very excited about this. This is going to go a long way, like I say, 80 or more kids. So hopefully, we're getting more than 80 kids involved in that. So it's great. So I give a big thumbs up to them for getting this done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, when we went through these budgets for the CBGG, you know, we have so many areas that we can spend money on, and this one was something that kind of came in at the last minute that we sponsored last year, and for, if memory serves me right, between $30,000 or $40,000 that we invested, we've gotten a great return just for this one. So I said it then, and I'm going to say it again, whenever you teach someone how to fish, you don't have to worry about how they eat. So that's the whole idea behind that grant writing, is to teach them how to do those grants so they can come and get money at other places. They don't come back to council or to the CBGG money that we only have a small pie to work from to get, and this is a good example. So I would like to thank the United Way for their efforts and for the grant writing and LACCA. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mrs. Miles.
I also would like to echo my appreciation for the work that was done on this grant here for give kids additional opportunities to be enrolled in Head Start. And also, I will be abstaining from this as I serve on the United Way and Head Start Board.
All right. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say that the first year that we funded this, the results weren't that terrific. The second year, this past summer, we funded it for the next program year, and I was ready to pull the plug on it. I'm glad we didn't, and I'm glad that the United Way was able to get a return on investment for that program. My hat's off to them. I did read something over the weekend, and I'm sorry to hear that Phil Haynes is going to be retiring sometime this year. Hopefully, the impetus of the program, the purpose of this program, will continue on, and we'll see those types of returns on investment from that CWG allocation. So congratulations to them, and congratulations to the Head Start Program. With that, I'll ask, well, we'll just, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record reflect that Mrs. Miles abstained. Communication number, oh, I'm going to place nine.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a transfer to UNOH at 1365 North Cable Road.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that Communication Nine be received and filed, and that the clerk be authorized to file with no objections.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Nine, and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objections. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I'm moving that Communication Number 10, receiving and filing. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation for a change order for the sanitary sewerless station.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I'm moving that Communication Number 11 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to proceed with bidding process for capital improvements.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I'm moving that Communication Number 12 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 12. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. Low.
For those that are listening, this communication deals with legislation that had been prepared. This is for the cost of a sweeper and Simmons Field Phase Two, which is the lighting, and Simmons Field Phase Three, which is fencing and equipment. At this time, I'm very uncomfortable with this, and my reasoning is thus. I have been a third world counsel, been for five years now, and I have literally been begging for improvements in Lincoln Park and Schoonover area. I don't understand why one part is more important than the next part, and I challenge any of you to go out and look at Froat, how beautiful it is, and then I dare you to go to Schoonovers. There's a vast difference. There's a vast difference in Lincoln Park. Lincoln Park has improved a lot from where it was, but it's still some things that needs to be done over there. The basketball courts in both areas, I have asked repeatedly, can we find the money to take care of these issues, and it still hasn't been done. But we go out and find lighting and fencing, and we spend money where we choose to spend money. And for that reason, I'm going to say no, and I'm sorry to the local team, this isn't a strike against you, you're doing a fine job, but we also have other teams in the city. We have a semi-pro football team. I see nothing helping them. We have a semi-pro basketball team. I see nothing helping them. So for that reason, I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Armstrong.
Appreciate your concern, Mr. Low. I don't believe you had the privilege of attending the finance hearings this year, so this may be news to you. And let me just preface it by saying, certainly, Public Works has been trying to communicate the message that we do not have the resources we would like to have for all of our infrastructure needs, especially parks. When I came here, the block grant allocation for the Public Works Department exceeded 1.3 million. As you know, this past year, our allocation for demolition and park improvement and street was someplace in an order of about 300,000. So we have lost funds drastically over the years that I've been here, and that's been a struggle. Certainly, Mr. Low, you've made your interest known about the needs of Schoonover and Lincoln, and we concur with you. We know those improvements need to be made. What you do need to be aware of is the funds that we have from the block grant this coming year, we have dedicated $38,000 of our block grant allocation to be used in Lincoln Park. So of the $50,000 for all of the park improvements, the lion's share of that is going to Lincoln Park to renovate those basketball courts. In addition, we have $8,000 from stormwater funds would also go to improve that project, reconditioning the basketball courts. There is drainage problems in that area. That is part of the failure. That is responsible for part of the failure of the surface there, and rather than put new wine in old wine skins, we need to do the additional work for the drainage before we make that improvement. So, and one more comment about Simmons Field. The locos and others have been teaming together, trying to find outside-city resources to make this happen, and the entire community came together and worked with us with the AEP Challenge, of which $75,000 has been awarded to the city to be used for lighting improvements at Simmons Field. So not all of this, all of our resources are local or coming from city of Lima proprietary or general funds. That in tandem with additional funds from Ashland Oil and, Mr. St-- and Potash have come by way of private donations for the local Simmons Field renovation. Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong, while you're there, that additional $8,000 that you just spoke on, none of that can go towards the basketball court at Schoonover or fencing? We talked about--
Correct.
They got the new fencing, the old fencing may go over here. This is what I'm saying.
We haven't forgot about your suggestion. Can we reuse, once we get into Phase Three, can any of the fencing at Simmons Field be salvaged for the courts at Schoonover? We haven't discounted that. We're taking that suggestion seriously, and if that can be done, we will see if we can do that.
Okay. That's appreciated. What you said is appreciated. I don't want to fence in a raggedy court. Court is horrible.
Which court are we talking--
It's Schoonovers now. It's horrible.
Well, again--
It's been horrible for five years. That's all I'm saying. We find ways to improve certain areas, and what you said is understood, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Okay.
But what I'm saying--
And we have needs at the pool, and we--
I haven't even spoken on the pool. That's a whole nother. I understand that. That's infrastructure. I understand that there's a lot that needs done over there. I'm talking about the little bit. We got people that had to go from the east side of town to the Y, or we got people that got to go from the east side of town to other parks to play when they're right there in their backyard, and they can't do it. I'm asking you, can we put some resurfacing over at Schoonover Pool?
Didn't--
I mean, at Schoonover Park Basketball Court.
And of this year's available budget, I don't see that happening this year. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the Auditor regarding the contract labor report.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Communication Number 13 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 13. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 14.
From the City Engineer requesting legislation to amend the contract with bluffing paving.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I'm moving that Communication Number 14 be received and filed, and the Law Director authorized to prepare any necessary legislation to comply with the request.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 14, and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 15.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation declaring the necessity of constructing sidewalks.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I'm moving that Communication Number 15 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number 15. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
On this communication, there was noted originally 208 locations that have been located or cited, and of those, 96 have complied, leaving 112 locations that need to be replaced, sidewalks. I'd like to ask Mr. Armstrong if he could come up and speak on this process and make mention of those that did comply and what usually happens with the remaining 112.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. There are two pieces of legislation tonight, and this first one deals with what we will call the 2015 Combined Sidewalk Project. And as Ms. Adams has pointed out, 208 property owners received notices saying that their sidewalks are deficient, and a large number of them went ahead on their own initiative and had those sidewalks replaced. For the remaining 112 locations, should you pass the resolution of necessity here shortly, what that will enable us to do is to package that 112 portions of sidewalk and bid those out for replacement this year. The bid will go out approximately May this year. The contractor will perform the work between June and August, and then at completion of the project, we will assess all and detail, give an assessment and a detail of all those costs, and come back with you, and we will send a bill to those property owners for payment. Should they not pay those, then we will be back approximately this time next year, ask them to have those charges assessed. Many property owners find it more convenient to allow the city to prepare our specifications and have one contractor go all over town and repair these. We seem to think we get a pretty good price typically. We seem to think we get a pretty good price typically, and that is of value to the property owners, but the property owners will be needing to anticipate paying that, either lump sum or they can choose the option to not pay it and have it assessed and apply it on their taxes over a span of five years. Thank you.
Mr. Elstrom.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
Mr. Elstrom, I've got one quick question for you. For the individuals, explain something for those listening. The property starts from, our responsibility as a citizen is from the sidewalk to the street, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What about the individual, what about the properties where we planted trees? Or is the city's, is the city's trees that's tearing up the homeowner's property?
Yes.
Are we gonna cut those trees out, or are we gonna continue to charge them as the tree grows?
Our policy on trees is any property owner that has concern about a tree should call the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Division, which number is 221-5195, 221-5195. We will have the forester go out, take a look at the tree. If the tree is diseased or dangerous or dying, we remove it. If the tree can be salvaged, we maintain the tree. Sometimes a root is cut. Sometimes the sidewalk is bent around the tree and in attempts to save the tree. Ms. Adams and the Public Works Committee a couple of years ago did authorize, did study the issue and authorized legislation which allows the city to participate, 25 cents per square foot. You have it in front of you. Check me if I'm wrong. In other words, the city will participate to some degree for sidewalk that has been damaged by a tree in the tree lawn. In addition to that, the portion of your sidewalk that borders your lot, if it is the area that is the corner, the radii, the radius, the city picks up 100% of that cost of replacement of the curbs, gutters, as well as the sidewalk in the corner lots. If it is a public alley that borders your lot, the property owner is not responsible for that sidewalk crossing the alley. That is also picked up by the City of Lima. Does that answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
Howard, I think also, when Public Works Committee dealt with that, Tracy, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think we put a cap at $10,000 a year to see what the participation was, and maybe if you could just apply and report to council on, has anyone taken advantage of it? To what degree have we maxed out?
There has been some people who have taken advantage of that. It hasn't come close to that 10,000. As we get closer to that 10,000, it was our understanding that we should come back and let you know that and then consider raising the allowance.
So there is a mechanism for some relief?
Yes, there is.
Mr. President. Go ahead, Mr. McLean.
Just for everyone's, you know, we talk about where these are located. I would say 90% of these are in the second ward. This can go on in any neighborhood. So all I'm asking is if anyone has issues with, please give me a call. I'll explain it as well as I can. If we can't, we'll get Howard on the phone, and we'll go through it. But, you know, it's a quality of life to have an area so you can walk down your neighborhood without tripping and falling or having gravel underneath your feet, tripping and falling. And I think, you know, it's part of a responsible homeowners to take care of that. So I respect this, and I know it's not what I like to see in my award, but it can happen anywhere. So if I can help in any way, please call me. My phone number's out there, and I'll be happy to help what I can.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Glenn.
Yeah. Howard, I just have one question. I'm petition, you know, we are petitioning sidewalks in areas. We've about completed it now. Will they get the trees involved in that when they sign for them, or is not involved with them signing that?
I'm sorry.
You know, petition certain areas in there for sidewalks. You know, we got the petition together. Will the trees be involved in that? Because I wanted to ask you about that.
Okay. The resolution of necessity before you strictly refers to sidewalks, sidewalk replacement of deficient sidewalks. In the case where a neighborhood wants to petition for improvements-
That's what I'm doing now.
Then a neighborhood can either through their counselor or through a written petition, ask for improvements, whether that be alley improvements, alley paving, or complete sidewalk and curb replacements in their property, and include trees and other improvements in the curb lawn.
Okay.
So that can be done, but typically that's done by a petition method.
Yeah, that's what we're doing now.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Elstrom, don't leave yet.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Good, because I've got something.
Yes, sir.
It's interesting, we've been doing ordinances like this on sidewalk projects for well over 25 years, but the only part that hasn't been covered this evening is how does somebody get on this list? And I'd like you just to explain that for everybody so that we're clear.
When the City of Lima receives a complaint of a deficient sidewalk, we have one of our inspectors from the engineering division go out and look not only at that particular address, but all of the sidewalks on that side of the street within the duration of that block. And if there's additional deficient sidewalk, then all of those owners are issued a notice. By the way, if somebody disagrees, they can call our engineering office or send us an email, and we will again dispatch an inspector to take a second look at it to see if it does meet the tolerances of the deficiency or not.
Okay. And on top of that, I'm just gonna add, because all of the sudden this was a hot-button issue in the media. But just so everyone is aware, I think you still do this, all new elected officials get their sidewalks courteously inspected for the sake of us having our sidewalks in good order so that as we pass these legislation, we're not sitting there with terrible sidewalks and imposing this on others.
Yeah.
Because I remember my first year, welcome to council, and by the way, and at that time I lived on a corner lot, so we had to replace the entire section of sidewalk. But just so everyone knows, this has become a, like I said, we've been doing it for 25 years, and all of a sudden a headline makes it sound like we've invented some sort of cruel and unusual punishment for people who have sidewalks, and it simply isn't true. These ordinances go back, again, well over the 25 years that I've been on council, so. And I believe that the administrative department heads also get their sidewalks inspected also.
Equal treatment.
And it truly is, just so that we're not passing legislation while, you know, we've got dirt in our corner too, so. I just want to get that out there. Thank you, Mr. Elstrom, for the explanation. All those in favor of the motion to receive and file communication number 15, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 16.
From the city engineer regarding legislation levying special assessments for sidewalk construction.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number 16 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 16. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Along the same lines as what we just discussed, the previous communication was 2015 projects to be done. This legislation, communication number 16, is for 2014 projects that are already done. And later on in the ordinance addressing this, as Counselor McLean said, 2015 is at the north end of Lima. This one addressed the southeast side of Lima, and of those 59 locations were in the fifth ward, so they, it can happen anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 17.
From the finance director regarding legislation to enter into a contract for the purchase of an SUV for the fire department.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number 17 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 17. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 18.
From the finance director regarding legislation to allow the police department to contract for the purchase of vehicles.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number 18 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 18. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 19.
From Mike Flynn regarding the Boyer Street vacation.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number 19 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number 19. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Yep. I did not support this last city council because we had a couple of things there we need to work on about drugs paraphernalia in the stores. We had a call from a couple of peoples live in the area and a couple of peoples live outside the area. They appreciated that we did not support that, and she told me let Mr. Lowe and Mr. Gordon, she thanked you guys for it, and that because we didn't go for the dollars. We went strictly for trying to make sure our city does not continue seeing these paraphernalia in there. And now we got a letter that stating that they're not gonna, they're not gonna have these things in the store. I will support tonight, and I appreciate that, that we are gonna make sure that our kids doesn't have to continue going through these stores, and the president put it in committee. So we're gonna have a committee, we're gonna set up a date so we can talk about the paraphernalia. When I say I call it dope pipes, the sex items they have in these stores, and they say they're not gonna have that in the new store, so we're gonna, I'm gonna support tonight. But I'm glad that she called us and said that, because I did feel bad, because, you know, when people look at saying you're stopping money from coming to the city, but I think our kids is our future. Our kids come first. And I continue saying that, and I'm hoping that all these new stores open up, these gas stations, that they'll get a message sent that we are not gonna support if you got them, you got all the drug paraphernalias in them stores and sex objects in there for our kids to see when they come here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I too am going to support the vacation of Boyer Street after conversations with Mr. Flynn and the communication that we just received, and also the people that I spoke of that put forth to do a second survey, who were now happy that this stuff was gonna be removed from the store, and they are happy to be getting a nice store in the neighborhood. But I thought the whole thing was kind of interesting, because this building is gonna be good for our community. It's gonna be a nice, beautiful new service station. And what I found interesting was that three of us chose not to do it, and five of us chose to vote yes on it. And I think I'm glad that we had that difference, because we made a difference, but at the same time, we didn't lose the, we did not lose this new business in our city. So, you know, I think it's important that we remember that it's okay to have a difference of opinion, and maybe we don't get upset with one another when we have a difference of opinion, that we just agree to disagree. Because, you know, I, in my thinking, I think God had his hand in this, and I was very, very happy the way this has worked out. But I'll be supporting it when it comes to our vote as well. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Under reports of officials, we have a report regarding Lacknip from Bob Friedman and Rob
Good evening, council. My name is Robert Friedman. I'm the current First Vice President, Lacknip. I will be very brief. I would like to inform council, we have made a major improvement at the Lacknip Center on Spring Street, which is the old fire station number four. We have installed a new HVAC system in the building, so we're very happy to have that in the building. And with that, I would like to introduce Rob Cottrell. He's our new Lacknip Resource Center coordinator.
Good evening.
Good evening.
2120 Morris. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to talk about the Lima-Alan County Neighborhoods in Partnership Organization. As some of you are aware, we celebrated our 20th anniversary this past year and are looking forward to continuing to serve the Lima community well into the future. Our most publicized contributions are the partnerships we've developed in sponsoring such events as the International Expo, National Night Out, Community Gardens, and the Ottawa River Cleanup Project. These events have become a tradition in our community, and we take great pride in the role we have, that we have in each of them. We've also built a house in Safety City where we handed out candy to the children this past Halloween. The addition of the Resource Center has given us the opportunity to consolidate our activities to one centralized location. Our tool shed equipment has been well-maintained, and all of our members are encouraged to borrow what they need through our no-cost tool lending program. An annual training agenda has been developed for our neighbors where they can come in and learn about such things as how to run a project, how to be an effective leader in the neighborhood, CPR, first aid, and much more. One of our most recent partnerships has been with both the city and AEP. We have participated in information gathering meetings, completed energy surveys, and begun to develop neighborhood training on how to save energy. Our participation in the program was instrumental in getting new lights for our stadium to the tune of about $75,000. We're looking forward to the future and are advocating for green buildings throughout the city and Allen County. We have also begun to look at our neighborhood memberships and have started identifying various potential projects for the annual Make a Difference Day. This will be in addition to the localized cleanup projects conducted by each individual neighborhood association throughout the year. Other programs we sponsor are Coffee with the Cop and the Quarterly City Focus Meetings. In an effort to stay abreast of current events, our members attend various meetings throughout the year, such as this council meeting, the lieutenant's meeting, the Ottawa River Coalition meetings. We also train our members to be neighborhood specialists through the Lima Care Academy, and we actively participate in the Regional Network Neighborhood Conference, which consists of 22 cities in five states. Currently, we are working on the development of a five-year strategic plan. This plan will encompass such things as membership growth, funding, Resource Center expansion, tool availability, training, and additional projects. Once again, I thank you for the opportunity to showcase Lacknip and talk about our service to the community. Please keep us in mind as you plan for the future, because we want to be there with you and fulfill our vision of making Lima an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under reports of officials is Vince Ozier.
Hopefully, every council member should have two packets of information in front of them, one that looks like this. That's what the information I'm gonna go through, and then the rest of the other packet is background data on the information that I'm gonna go through. So I'll try to keep this fairly brief. If you have questions about any of the data in the coming days, please feel free to give me a call. I'll try to answer it as best I can. What we want to talk, what I'm gonna talk about is workforce diversity at the City of Lima. The first slide that you see is just some 2000 census data that I think everybody's familiar with, indicating that generally speaking, the minority population in the state of Ohio is about 15.1%. It's a consistent in Allen County, as in about 15.1%, and then within the City of Lima, it's about 31.7% as of the 2000 data. The next slide is something that council should already be aware of. It was, I think, communicated, sent via communication letter based on Counselor Lowe's request in December, I believe, and it just shows the current makeup of full-time employees with the City of Lima. And it just shows the current makeup of full-time employees with the city of Lima. When we talk about the available labor market, first of all, the source of the information that we have is based on applicants that self-disclose information about their racial background or their racial makeup. And so it is, it's based on voluntary information. Not every applicant provides information. And then the other thing that's important is, is that currently the city and really since the end of 2012, the city selects civil service employees from an eligibility list. We've always selected from an eligibility list, but since the end of 2012, we've been doing it under the revised rule, which is the Rule of Ten. It used to be the Rule of Three. Prior to the end of 2012, it was changed to the Rule of Ten at the end of 2012. And the data that you have in the second packet is based on hiring processes that have occurred since the Rule of Three was changed to the Rule of Ten. The effect, the next slide is an attempt to identify the effective labor market. And as you look at that slide, you'll see that based on the information that we've had since the beginning of 2013, we've had about five hundred and seventy-one applicants and roughly fourteen percent of those applicants have been minority. The next is to identify some issues that we still have with the current system that we have today. The top part of the data shows, first of all, applicants. The next line is people that make the eligibility list, which is somebody that has passed the civil service exam. Although not everybody that passes a civil service exam always makes an eligibility list. They're eligible for an eligibility list, but based on the pure numbers that occur, sometimes the board will not, the Civil Service Board will not interview all candidates. That's determined by the number of hires that are going to be relative to the number of the people that pass the test. The next line is the number of people that were eligible to be interviewed based on the current Rule of Ten. And then the last line is, shows the number of hires that have occurred based on this data set. And as you can see over to the right, there have been twenty-five people hired from this data group. I'd like to draw your attention to the lower left-hand corner of that slide. As you can see, the minority applicant group represents just under fourteen percent, whereas the eligibility list group, the minority, the number of minorities available drops to just under eleven percent. And then as far as those eligible for interview, again, the number drops to about nine percent. And then, as you can see, we've been able to hire roughly about sixteen percent of the twenty-five hires that we've had have been minorities. That's important when you look at the next slide. And the next slide actually comes from a data that I submitted to council probably back in either 2008 or early 2009. And I want to draw your attention to the lower left-hand corner of that slide. And as you will see, at that time, our hires for minorities were about eleven and a half percent, and that was for a period of about five years. And so what I'm trying to point out there is that when council authorized the Civil Service Board rule change from the Rule of Three to the Rule of Ten, as you compare the two data sets, we've been able to hire a greater percentage of minorities since that change has occurred. Okay, and the next slide is just how do we get better? We're still underutilized with respect to women and minorities, generally speaking. And so in order to improve workforce diversity, as I think Councilor Lowe has pointed out, among others, we must get a greater percentage of minorities to participate in the selection process, especially for positions in the police and fire service. The police and fire service are important for two reasons. One is that they represent about thirty-eight percent of the total employee population of the city. And the other important issue is that their tenure is shorter. That is, is that they become eligible for retirement more quickly than the average, than other city employees. Full retirement for purposes of employees not part of the Ohio Police and Fire Pension System is about thirty-two years now. That was a change. It used to be thirty years, but it recently changed to, for most of us at least, to thirty-two years. But for police and fire employees, it's twenty-five years. And so not only do you have a significant portion of the employee population that is police and fire employees, but they turn over faster, too. Typically, they can retire after twenty-five years of service. The second point I'd like to make as far as how we can get better is, as the data suggests, the mayor's proposal to change from the Rule of Ten to a pass/fail system will allow more minority applicants to fully participate in the selection process. And I think the data that we showed on a couple of earlier slides makes that point. And then finally, both the Fire Department and the Police Department are working on proposals to improve the recruitment of minorities generally. There's a lot of conversation going on. I think there's some things that the Police Department's been doing relative to the Red and Blue Program and some other things, where they're trying to actually work within the Lima city school system. And then we've also been in conversations with the Fire Department about some opportunities that we have. We hope to be bringing some proposals forward in the coming weeks for council to consider about how we may be able to improve the recruitment of those particular targeted groups. That's all I have. Has anybody got any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe?
Mr. Lowe.
I've got a question. On the slide that says, how does the data compare?
Okay, let me get to that. Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you said that the percentage of minorities hiring went up?
This data represents the period prior to, this was when we used the Rule of Three. And if you see that the number of minorities hired for this group of data is about eleven and a half percent, I'm doing that math in my head, so bear with me. And on the prior slide, you can see that the number of minorities hired is about sixteen percent.
This is part-time and full-time?
This is only full-time. This is only full-time. Yes, that's correct.
During this period, wasn't there hiring freezes?
There may have been hiring freezes, but I don't know how that really affects the data. I don't.
I don't understand how it went up if we weren't hiring.
I'm sorry?
I guess I don't understand how it went up if we weren't hiring.
Well, it actually went up in the most recent two-year period. That's where we, the greater percentage of minorities have been hired in the most recent two-year period when we went to the Rule of Ten. That's the point that I'm trying to make.
Okay, I'm confused.
Okay.
Paper says through July 2008.
Yeah, that was the period when we had the Rule of Three.
The slide before that is 2012.
That's correct. I'm sorry.
Through 2004.
Yeah, actually, the end of 2012 in effect.
So 2013 through 2014.
That's correct.
It doesn't show on here.
Okay, I see what you did.
The biggest piece of the freeze.
I see what you did.
That's when the economy.
I see what you did.
Okay, all right. And again, if councils have questions later, I'll be more than happy to sit down and go through the data, especially the data that we use for the report. I'll be more than happy to talk about that. Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Myers.
First, Mr. Oger, I want to thank you for the information here because it helps me understand what's going on and what we need to do. Probably the one thing that stuck out the most for me was on your front page here, the labor market.
Okay.
For the applicants that have applied for the customer service specialist, that there were fourteen.
You're looking at the actual sport data, right? Okay, I'm sorry. Let me get to that. Yes, okay.
That one kind of stuck out with me, and I will probably get in with you to get further information, but it shows that fourteen individuals applied for the customer service specialist position. One was on the eligibility list and one was hired. So I guess my question, again, when we think about, you know, using the data that is presented to us to seek improvements going forward here and to see what needs to be done in this process here, I would like to get with you to see, to understand, of that fourteen females, minority females that applied for that customer service position, what were they lacking that prevented them, you know, from being eligible for that? I mean, fourteen applied, fourteen minority women applied and only one person, you know, got it. So I guess I want to understand that data, too.
We can talk about that in detail. That's probably an example, and I don't remember from, I'd have to look for sure, but that may be an example where we had a lot of people take the test. We knew that we were only gonna hire three people. The board, the Civil Service Board, only generated enough to make sure that we could hire, or excuse me, interview thirty people. So there may have been many other people that didn't get on the eligibility list that passed the test. And so, but we can talk about that. We can look at the data in greater detail.
So thanks for the information here. And again, this is helpful as we try to dig into the situation and see what issues we have concerning the testing and if there's anything that we can do to make it, you know, a simpler process and to generate more individuals to apply for the test.
Agreed. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes, Mr. President.
I have a feeling you need to stand there a few minutes. I'm sorry, Mr. Glenn.
Yes, he does.
Because I know I've got a question for you.
But the Cadet program that I proposed last year, could we look at that? It's still in committee and it will work. Let's put it as a pilot program, and I know we kept it in committee because we didn't have no money for it. Now, get opportunity, and I know some folks in the audience know about Cadet program, okay? That we got, we brought minorities in that Cadet program, you know, and I had proposed it for part-time. But I think, let's look at that, let's look at it for six months, see how it works, you know? And, you know, because, you know, we got to, you know, we got to look at another remedy. And I think that we get minorities more involved in that, we can see a difference in there. And also, I disagree with minorities not taking the test. I mean, we might look at it right now. Okay, when I've been on city council long enough to see a difference, I want you to go back to 205 on back and research it first before we make these accusations on that. I want you to bring that back up and see how many minorities went in for that testing and did not get the job. Let's do that first.
We actually have that data. That was, that data was communicated in that report that went to council back in 2008, 2009. We had that data going back, it was even before 2005. I'm not exactly sure how far in the back, but.
You go back, you go back to it, you'll see a lot of minorities are taking the test, was not getting the jobs. So they didn't get the job, so they just say, so now we gotta try to come back and council say, hey, we're coming back. You remember, we talked about all this when you first got hired?
Right, right.
So that's what I'm saying. Let's remember.
Which is one of the reasons why we had proposed some time ago, Mr. Glenn, to change the city charter and then the Rule of Ten.
Right, but I don't want to hear that minorities is not coming for the test because you continue hearing it that, I take the test, I don't get the job, okay? So let's got to fix that problem. That's what we got to fix.
Well, I'm gonna tell you the hard facts. Depending on what level of minority percentage that your target is, and to me, a reasonable target's fifteen percent based on the labor market that we have, we're not gonna ever get there if we don't get more minorities to participate in the process. I'm telling you that right now. Especially, especially if they don't participate in the process for police officer and firefighter at greater numbers. It has to happen or we're not gonna be successful. It's statistics. I mean, it's not, it's not Vince Oger saying this, it's just, it's just numbers. And it's a numbers thing, and so it has to be addressed. And your idea about a Cadet program, frankly, I think is a good idea. It's something that the Police Department's been looking at, the Fire Department's been looking at. And as I mentioned, I think we're gonna have some proposals coming forward. Very open to talk about the Cadet program that we talked about last year when we determined that there wasn't funding available for it. Hopefully, there will be funding, but at the end of the day, that's gonna be up to city council to determine. But anyway, I think there's some, there's some ideas on the table. There's a lot of other ideas that we need to consider because what the things that we've done in the past, frankly, just they haven't worked. And we need to find a way.
I know Officer Garlock is working on a program at South School.
Yeah, that's right. I believe that's a red to blue program, which I think is a good thing, so.
So he, him talked about that, how he's working with, letting kids know about being a police officer, you know? So that's something we're working on. But yeah, I agree with you on that.
Okay, I mean, there's opportunity here, but.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Oger, for the sake of recent discussion and the proposal from the mayor, on this document that's 2013 to present, I want to make sure everybody understands this. The eligibility list is from all of the applicants, and that is created by the Civil Service Board, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's given, that's solely on the testing data that they get.
That is correct.
And interviews that they do.
That's correct.
Okay. I would like you, if you could, for these, this list right here, okay? I want two things. Number one, I want to know how many applicants that took the test passed the test, okay? And break it down by the demographics, if you can, you know, if you can, for those that disclose, okay?
Civil Service Board will have that information. We should be able to get it.
That's, I want it, we need it.
Okay.
So that we can see the impact or the lack of impact of a simple pass/fail rule that opens up the entire pool to administrative interviews.
Right.
Secondly, on this report, I'd like you to do whatever you have to do in the spreadsheet so that these headings appear on each page.
Okay.
Okay? Just for my clarification, okay? But somehow, I would like that data in there so that we can see that, for example, Account Clerk One LPD, there were eighteen total that took the test, correct?
Eighteen total that took the test that self-disclosed.
Precisely.
Right.
Okay?
So.
Of that, six made the eligibility list. What I'd like to know is, did, purely, it would tell me the numbers right there, there what, wasn't, how many clerks did we hire?
We hired two.
How many openings were there? Two, twenty?
Actually, when we first asked for the list, there was one, but we ended up using that for another position.
What I'm saying is, is in a case like that, of the eighteen that disclosed and took the test, how many passed the test?
Okay.
Was it, you know, six is the eligibility list, but were there ten or eleven that passed the test? That's the data that we also need to have.
Okay. We can do that, we should be able to do that.
Frankly, I would suggest that you add another column also that shows those applicants that did not disclose.
I can do that.
Okay? So there could be sixteen that disclosed that took the test, there might have been twenty-three that actually took the test, seven did not disclose.
Right.
Okay? Which completely understand, we can't compel them, that's their federal right to not disclose.
Right.
Okay? So.
It's all long-term.
I think that that would be helpful to us also.
Okay.
Okay?
We can do it.
So.
Good information, I appreciate it. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin?
Just one pointer, point of clarification. The proposal, either Vince, you can answer it, or the mayor can answer it, to go to a pass/fail in that whole discussion does not change the passing score.
That's not been proposed by the administration, no. It would still be seventy percent.
Okay. So it's not, you know, there's, there's a lot of information and then there's misinformation. And the misinformation around dumbing down the test isn't accurate.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I would like to make one point about that because that's talked about a lot, actually. And I would challenge or encourage people to do their own research. But based on the research that I've reviewed, the correlation coefficient between a person's test score for hiring purposes and their performance on the job is not strong. It's very weak, actually. And what that means is, is that a person that does well on a test may or may not do well on the job, and a person that does poorly on the test may or may not do well on the job. So it's not a good method for choosing people to hire. It can be a good method for an initial screening process, but when it comes to actually selecting somebody for a work group, you want to do a lot more things, including interviews and other things that you can do, hopefully, that will help you make a better decision for that person and that work group and that organization, so. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Oger. We go on to Resolution 115.
We got a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Resolution 115.
Okay.
Which I don't have a copy of it. I don't understand.
Declaring the necessity of constructing certain designated sidewalks and requiring that the abiding property owners construct the same.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that Resolution Number 115, 1-15 be adopted on its first read. I move that Resolution Number 115, one dash fifteen be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to adopt Resolution 115 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon, Mr. Nixon and Mr. Gordon.
The Resolution 115 has been adopted on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 297-14.
This is a third reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Clements, Nelson and Associates.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that ordinance number 297-14 be passed on its third reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 297-14 on its third reading, and I'll note that it had been amended on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 297-14 has been passed on its third reading by a five to three vote. Ordinance 298-14.
This is also a third reading, amending ordinance number 70-14.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that ordinance number 298-14 be passed on its third reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 298-14 on its third reading. Is there any discussion? I will note also that this had been amended on its first reading, so it's as amended. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 298-14 has been passed on its third reading by a five to three vote. Ordinance 304-14.
This is also a third reading, vacating a portion of Boyer Street.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 304-14 be passed on its third reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 304-14 on its third reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 304-14 has been passed on its third reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 615.
Loving special assessments for the 2014 combined sidewalk project, construction of certain described sidewalks, in accordance with Resolution Number 1013, adopted October the seventh, 2013.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance number six dash fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance six fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance six fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance seven fifteen.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that ordinance seven fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance seven fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance seven fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance eight fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Harris ERP for maintenance and support of the Harris ERP financial management software.
Mr. President? Mr. Tevin? I move that ordinance eight fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance eight fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance eight fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance nine fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for preparation of a five-year consolidated plan.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that ordinance nine fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance nine fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance nine fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance ten fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Superior on to provide home loan originator services.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that ordinance number ten fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance ten fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance ten fifteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Ordinance eleven fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Northwest Property Maintenance Services for property maintenance services for 2015.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that ordinance eleven fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance eleven fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance eleven fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance twelve fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with quality lawn care for property maintenance services for 2015.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that ordinance, ordinance twelve fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance twelve fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance twelve fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance thirteen fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Katie's Enterprises for property maintenance services for 2015.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that ordinance thirteen fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance thirteen fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance fourteen fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Allen County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance fourteen fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance fourteen fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance fourteen fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance fifteen fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of land servers.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance fifteen fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance fifteen fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance fifteen fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance sixteen fifteen.
Amending ordinance forty-seven fourteen.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance sixteen fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance sixteen fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, just for clarification, for council, I don't know if they looked at this, but, you know, when you start digging down in these lift stations, you find things that you don't want to find. And this one had to be a little deeper and some things added to it, and that's why we have this expense, so, appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance sixteen fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance seventeen fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of a street sweeper for the Public Works Department.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance number seventeen dash fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance seventeen fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon? Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance seventeen fifteen has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance eighteen fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase and installation of lighting for Simmons Field Phase Two.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance eighteen dash fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance eighteen fifteen on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who worked very hard at getting the lights out there in Simmons Field. This is the sixth ward, and Simmons Field is the old baseball field if anyone don't know. It's a baseball field Llama's used to play at, that was Llama Locas play at. And a lot of folks in the area, on the O-Dot and the W-Dot area is so happy about the new area. They're putting lights in there, and they enjoy the baseball team. And, you know, it's just a real good piece that came in our area there. And when we first started, Staley started it, and he got around a lot of folks to get that, get it signed and make phone calls. And it's just been very exciting to see a semi-pro baseball team playing in that area there, and people in the area is so happy about it, you know. There's a lot of different things that I'm working on. You know, we got a lot of the houses down in there, and no one had any problems during the baseball game, you know, all year long. They never had any problems. And I had an opportunity to talk to a lot of folks to come to the baseball game, and they was happy about it, that they left the shiny area and came in that area. And very pleased with this. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance eighteen fifteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Ordinance nineteen fifteen.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase and installation of fencing and equipment for Simmons Field Phase Three.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance nineteen fifty dash fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance nineteen fifteen on first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance nineteen fifteen has been passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Next, we have miscellaneous business. We will start with Mr. McLean. I'm going to authorize the, motion to authorize the clerk to run the meeting for a few minutes. I need to excuse myself.
Absolutely.
That was the motion. So.
All right, Mr. McLean.
First off, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Whoever's handing out the free passes to come, keep doing it, because I really enjoy seeing a crowd here. This is one of the ways you'll, you can see what we do up here, and if you have questions, I'm sure that any city councilman will be happy to answer. I know a lot of this may be, sound funny to you, but I can tell you, it's, after a while, it becomes pretty old hat to us. That's why you see us to say yes every once in a while and no every once in a while. So if you have questions, feel free to ask, and I really do appreciate you coming, because, you know, I've sat here many times when we've had the administration and just a couple extra people, and I always wonder, how are you going to make changes in our community if people don't communicate? And if we don't get out and vote? So I do appreciate every one of you coming here tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Lowe.
Thank you, Madam President.
Acting.
Acting, Madam President. I've got a couple of things, real quick. I would also like to echo what Councilman McLean just said. It's been many evenings when we came to council, good weather and bad weather, there was no one out here. And I'm glad that everyone is starting to come out and trying to get an understanding of what we're doing. It's a lot of, there was a couple ordinances tonight that you see me say no on. Some of you might think, well, he's saying no on everything.
You do.
I just, I'm a numbers person, and my thing is, if what's good for one, it needs to be good for all. And, and I, to me, just putting it out there, I see a lot of favoritism in certain sections of the city, and I think I would not be doing my individual justice in third ward if I didn't stand up for them. The other thing that I was going to say is, last council, I made a motion that the packet get placed online. It is online now. So I want you to check it out. I'm sure there's not a councilman up here, council lady, who would turn down any of your questions. I know they wouldn't. If you have any questions, contact us, ask us what's going on. If we don't have an answer, we'll get you to answer. But that helps us, too. The more people you got looking at certain things, you might see something that we don't see. We might need clarification on some things, just like I did this evening, that I didn't see earlier until we got to talking, and some things said in pre-council. The other thing that I was going to say, it was brought to me through one of my constituents, the facial gestures, the huffing puffing, the mannerisms while some individuals are speaking. Whether we like what they say or not, we got to be cognizant that we are on television. And it looks very disrespectful, and I took the time to, to watch and see, and it was going on. And I promised her I would say something, so I'm letting her know I'm saying it now. It did look bad. And the other thing that I was going to say is, from October, last week in October, also had another individual who was, watches this every time we have council, and said, you really, really need to check out Channel Two, what's really going on. I said, what are you talking about? Well, there was times when council was cut off from seven, I believe, one evening, council was cut off from seven twenty-one to about seven forty-eight, before it came back on. That information wasn't put out to the city. It was also brought to my attention that during my miscellaneous business, I was cut off three times. Now, I can understand once, maybe twice. But I got cut off three times. So I pray that IIT works on that, and make sure that that's taken care of for all of us. I wouldn't want none of us to get cut off. There will be a HR meeting this week. I do want to say this, there was a citywide meeting that took place at the Bradfield, and I really believe that it was a good meeting. I think a lot of information got out, civil service, administration, myself. I think we did a very good job. I was glad to see Counselor Adams and Counselor McLean there. I think it was a good discussion. I think it was well needed. I encourage you to come to the HR meetings, so you can be a part of the change. You are welcome to voice your opinion on, on the hiring. At the end of the day, a lot of this is going to fall on me for being the chair of the committee. So I want to do it right, and I want to need your help. And administration has their way, they want to do some things, and we have our opinion. The system does work. Whether, at the end of the day, I think we can all agree, whether we do it Mayor Berger's way, or we do it the way that some of the committee members and civil service feels the right way to do it, we have to have more participation. We have to have more participation. We could change it back to the way it was, or the way he's proposing right now. If we're not participating, what good is the change going to do? We need to participate. Some people thought, you know, I was jumping on my own race. At the end of the day, I'm going to keep saying that we got to start stepping up. We should got to start being vocal. Again, it comes back to, you can look at sections of the town, okay? Those that go out and vote, look at their city. Look at their parts of the city. Those that don't?
That's right.
Look at your parts of the city. Okay? So that's, that's all I got to say. The numbers, you can go down to the board and get the numbers, you can pull them for yourself, it'll blow your mind, we're not participating in the voting process to the degree we need to. This last election, I went in at, I think it's about quarter to twelve, I was number When I went to the Bradfield Center, I spoke with a couple of the ladies, their numbers was low also. Okay? So we got to step up, and we got to step up and speak up. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin.
I have a few things this evening. The February meeting for the Boulevard Neighborhood Association will be Tuesday, February twenty, or February third, Tuesday, February third, at seven PM in the Community Resource Center, which is the old fire station number four at fourteen forty West Spring Street. The issue, and I've seen it, I mean, I've seen it in the, in the media, the question of community-oriented policing, and what seems to have been lost so far in the discussion, and I just want to remind people, the first meeting of the year, Counselor Gordon and myself spoke about this. He and I had, over the Christmas holidays, met with members of the Black Ministerial Association, but it was even before that meeting that we both had feelings about community-oriented policing, and the fact that we needed to re-engage as a community. And I initiated conversations with the mayor and with the police chief for that specific purpose, and asked them to bring that proposal forward. And I, and I'm very, very pleased with the proposal that Chief Martin brought forward, because there was a lot of thought that went into it. I think that it, I think that there's more discussion has to take place, but the police department needs the resources to do the job, and the community-oriented policing side of it, the interfacing with, with those residents, that our law-abiding citizens is very, very important. The people who are not law-abiding citizens, there's only one kind of a relationship I want our police department to have with them, and it's not a good one. Okay? And the Black Ministerial Association, in their conversations with Counselor Gordon and I, said the same thing, and they said the same thing tonight. I know that there are other issues to be discussed, but from those discussions with the mayor and the, and the police chief, it came, that was on, I reported that out on January fifth. We had the Finance Committee meetings on the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, and I specifically asked the police department to be on the first night. And, and like many city council meetings, no one was there. There were a couple of media people there, but nobody participates in the process. Then, you know, there, there are plenty of people who want to criticize the process after the fact, but there just is total apathy. So I'm glad to see this place full. I'm glad to see you all here and engaged, and I can tell you're paying attention, you know, to, to the proceedings tonight. But I, I think as we go forward, that I would expect, Steve Cleaves is in the back, I would expect that budget's going to be to council February ninth. I'll have my report, and we will have that budget. That will be the final action that city council takes to set aside those funds. I think the number was two hundred twenty-six thousand dollars, Chief, was, was the additional amount that, that was requested, and the committee approved. So it's not like city council members aren't listening, because Counselor Gordon is not on the Finance Committee, it was Counselor Trace Adams and Ann Miles, and it was unanimous. There's, we are in this together, and I just want the community to understand that. This isn't anyone against the police department. This is giving our police department the tools that they need to perform their jobs effectively, and make sure that they have the resources to build and maintain the proper relationships with the community. So I take it very, very seriously. The other thing I'm going to comment on, the last item, and, and I have been on council for thirteen years, and I have heard many times the claim that only certain areas of this city have money spent in them. That's crap. That is not true, and what I would like to see is, I would like for Amy Odom to resurrect for the CBDG allocations and the funding over a period of time, where has the money gone? I think we do a great job in distributing this throughout the community, and if you look at the census tracts, and you look at the income levels, it is absolutely going in the right places in this community. If a certain counselor can't get something done, it may be a problem between that counselor and the way he's dealing with people. So take it for what it's worth. I would like that data to come forth. Where do we spend these, these dollars? Howard, where do we spend the dollars that, that you receive relative to the geographics of this community?
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin, just for the people that are assembled here, every year in the CBGG hearings, we do provide maps, we do provide data on exactly where those funds are used, and that only is for CBGG funds. I'll make that clear, that is only for that portion of funds we receive from the federal dollar. Those, those, all of those maps, all of that data is loaded onto our website. That's part of what's called our CAPER. We bring that to the council, so all that is public.
And I, and I want, I want that put in front of council again in hard copy. I hate to waste paper, but I want council members to be forced to look at this again, because I get tired of hearing that there are certain sections of this community that are favored over others. That's not the way it works. Now, I will tell you, there are certain council members who work harder at trying to get things done in their ward, and maybe they're more successful, but it's, it's not because, you know, someone sits up here and, and beats the table, it's, they develop relationships, and they talk to members of the administration, other council members, and they find a way to move their priorities forward. That's our job as city council members, and I'm just tired of hearing what I heard tonight, and I want the facts and data to set the story straight.
Prior to the five-year plan, there will be a recap of the last five years, what has been accomplished, that will be available.
Thank you. That's all.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to refer to the Public Works Committee, codified ordinance, chapter six forty-two, section six forty-two point one-one-five, as it relates to the gang graffiti.
Second. You have a motion on it?
Second. Motion in the second is to...
One question before, in the motion. You don't want the whole chapter referred, or you do?
I do.
You just want the section on the gang graffiti?
I do.
Want the whole chapter?
Yeah.
The motion in the second is to refer chapter six forty-two, and, in, in general, to the Public Works Committee for review. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
With that, I'd like to call a meeting of the Public Works Committee for next Monday, February second, at five PM, in these chambers. The other committee members have been notified and are able to attend. Already in that committee, as I had stated at the previous meeting, exists chapter fourteen oh nine of the special building criteria within the Design Review District, and we're going to look at it as it pertains to the borders and boundaries of the Design Review Board, council approval of appointees and disapproval, and along with the codified ordinance of fourteen oh nine point oh nine, in general, for policies and procedures. Again, it's this, this Monday, coming Monday, February second, at five PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I got a couple of things. First of all, Robin Jones, thanks so much for coming tonight, and it was great to hear you speak on everything that's going on. Also, I wanted to ask about the Citizen Review Board. Where are we at with that? So we can, are we going to put it back together, we going to get it back going again, or what? So we got to find out where that at. That's one thing you talked about, that we got to see where we're going to go with that, and I hope we get your answer by next week or the end of this week there, make sure we get that going on there. But it's really nice that you brought up a lot of things. Also, I'm hoping that, I was going to make sure the Safety Service Committee, that I will get a proposal for the Cadet program, and we asked for money for that, and we couldn't get no money for that. And that's a part of the tool that we trying to work on recruiting minority police officers. And if anyone, you know, anyone can put some ideas together, I think we should put this on a six-month program and find out, is this going to work or not? So that's already in, that's already in there, and it's been there for a year and a half. And first, we gave it to the Civil Service Board, and they had said that it was good with figuring out which way we're going to go with it, will it be a civil service job or just be a regular job? So I'm going to look back at that again, too, because that's one piece we got to look at, too, you know? And I know some folks saying that they didn't want me going out making phone calls to Cleveland, Canton, and Maslin, as I was doing, calling for their waiting list, so we bringing more minority police officers to Lima. And we, we work on trying to get them here, but we got to look at that, and that's something we need to look in right away. And we're not going to keep, continue every year that we can't find a way how we can hire more minority police officers, because that is a problem we need to do, take care. So I'm going, I'm going to look back into that again, see will that work again, and send it to the financial, send it to Tom and Mr. Tevin, look at it again, and see could we get some money for it, or we can put in, the chief look at it again, and we can put our hands together and see, is this a good, be a good tool for us to recruit minorities with? Or someone else, they got some more other reasons. I'm willing to listen to it all, but that was one thing I put to the table, and was very successful, if everyone know about what the Cadet program is all about. So, and that's something we got to look into on that. Also, I think all the folks, what I'm doing, I'm getting around, getting the sidewalk petition done, and I got like five hundred people to sign the petitions. There's a petition, you got to go around, they want new sidewalks, we get them, just saying what we did at Rica Street, and it got new curves and stuff in there, that's what we doing on State Street and Frog Street. We got them two streets to get done, so I will be knocking at the doors this weekend, trying to get that done, finish that all up, get it to the law director, because I know some folks, they like to see their sidewalks in by the fall. Also, I appreciate everyone calling. Yes, my brother passed away, and I appreciate everyone calling me, and thank you so much. You got some kind folks, and all the calls, and, and all the prayers. Thank you so much for that, you know, it make you feel good. And, thank you, thank you. But I wanted to be here tonight, though, because I didn't want to sit at home, you know, and, and I want to come here, it's, it's very important to be here, too, you know? And, you know, it's just great, and we got good folks out there. And we got a couple of things going on next week. I got a couple, Neighborhood Association, going to start working together on some different projects, fundraisers, so they can have money to do different things in, in our, in our community there. So I appreciate all of that. I appreciate all the ones who got the, the Law Enforcement of the Year, the Officer of the Year, and the Have a Dream Award, and the Mary Coven Award. Appreciate all the folks came out for the march. It was really great, and, you know, I mean, just, thank the young folks for coming out. That was great. And a lot of folks went out to see the movie, and I hear good remarks about that, too. So that's really great. Martin Luther King Day was a great day there, you know, with the breakfast and all, and everybody participated, you know? And, and I always say, as long as you got some kind of knowledge, and carry that knowledge the whole year, whenever you got out, you know, Pastor Mama got that going, and that's great. I was excited to see that, that a lot of young folks went and learned something, and I hope they learn from everything, the breakfast, the dinner, the march, all that, learn something out of it, though. But this is a good, good picture here, that we all trying to come to a good resolution for our city. We all here for, for something that need to be done, you know? You know, we not here to point fingers and nothing like that. Robin Jones did a great job, he spoke the truth on all, all the things, and that's something we going to work on, and we need to come together, you know, and, and make it happen, you know? Because all is love Lima, like you say, this is our city, and it's a beautiful place, and we can continue making it beautiful, but it takes us all to continue using our heads and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles.
Several things also here. First, I want to thank the Finance Committee for the three days of working with the Finance Director and with the Auditor on developing the two thousand fifteen city budget. It was a, it was a very informative experience. If you ever want to know, everything you want to know about the city's budget, we kind of talked about it that night, over three, three night period here, so it was very informative, and I appreciate the opportunity to know more about our budget, and what's, what, what the makeup of it is, and it was a good opportunity to truly, truly see the things that are, that are happening in this city, and the fact that our Budget Director and that our Auditor are really trying to do all they can to keep, to keep our city in, in line with the budget and the spending. Also, I want to thank our Police Chief again, for him coming to the budget meeting and presenting a proposal to city council, to the Finance Committee for the officers and for the community policing. Again, I want, just want to say thank you, because he heard the, the request of the committee, of the committee, and heard the request of the community, and he know that this is something, a pretty hot issue in our city. And so he, along with the, the initiation by a couple of our council members, we was able to, to make it happen here. So again, we have to be sensitive to the needs of our community. We cannot continue to let the requests and the things that are needed in this community fall on deaf ears. And so I was very, again, very appreciative of, of Chief Martin and his, and his staff coming up with the proposal to bring the community policing back, and I'm just hoping that going forward here, we'll be able to bring that back into the Lima area. The other thing is, Mr. Pastor Jones here, again, I appreciate you and the, and the Minister of Alliance coming out tonight here. Again, it's going to take all of us working together. I, I heard you say, talk about pinpoint policing being a concern, about the community policing being a concern, and also about redesigning the, the Citizen Review Board. My response back to you is, have you talked to anyone about coming together as a, in a meeting, a meeting and talk about these things face to face? I, if, if not, I suggest that that be your next move. You can come here and talk to council, and all of us, you know, have our, have our powers, but if we come together as, as a group, as a meeting, and iron out some of these concerns, I think we will, we will go a long ways to resolving a lot of the issues face to face, having a dialogue, you know, understanding the hearts of, of, of what you concerned about here. So I suggest, you know, if, if it hasn't already been done, that there be a face-to-face meeting, and that there be dialogue if it hasn't already. I don't know what's been done already, but I, I would suggest, get all the individuals that is involved. Again, I don't know what's happened, this is just my suggestion. The mayor, the police chief, one of the majors, a council rep, and then several, at least two representation for the Minister of Lima, let's meet together, and let's try to work these things out here, because they're valid concerns, they're valid issues, and, and I commend you again for coming forth and talking about it, because the thing is, if we continue just to talk about it and put it out front here and nothing being done, you know, we got to do more than just talk about, we need to put foot to it, we need to put some action to it. And, and as a community, we need to come together and be unified in order to resolve some of these issues. And it can be done. Not everything always going to happen the way that we want it to happen, but I think if we just make that effort to come together and meet face to face, you know, there's been a lot of conversations, you know, done, but, you know, for every, all the participants to sit in a, in a, in a meeting and talk about it, I think that will be very fruitful, and we will, you know, over a period of time, get some results. So I, again, I would be glad to, to be involved in it, I would be glad to be a council rep in this, but, because I truly believe that these are valid concerns, and I truly believe that they should be addressed, but in the right form. The other thing is, I would like to, again, I have a, I have a, a recognition of Martin Luther King's birthday, which was on January fifteenth. I want to, I want to quote this from Martin Luther King. He says, "We have to repent in this generation, not merely for the hateful words and actions of the bad people, but for the appalling silence of the good people." So I'm saying, we need to, you know, do things here. You know, if things are going to happen in this city, it has to be followed with action. If we are to make Lima what it needs to be, we have to come together and be unified. Will we always agree? No. Will we always get everything that we want? No. But there are some things that are doable in this city. And I think, you know, with the right participants in the circle talking, we can get things done in this city, and we can move on to be the great city that we, that we can, can be. And so, again, I say for 2015, I believe great things are gonna happen in this city. I truly believe that in my spirit, and I believe that we're all gonna come together as one, eventually. Right now, we're separated. Right now, we're all in different little pockets, different little segments, but I think if we just really talk about the key issues, and we be unified, and come as a oneness of spirit, and have that vision for our city, that we can be a much greater city than what we are. It's time out for division. It's time out for negativity. It's time out for everybody over here doing this chit, chit, chit-chatting, but nothing, nothing being done or said. So, I, again, I commend everybody for being here, but we have to be more than just come to this meeting and hear. We have to be doers. We have to be doers. We can come here every, every meeting that we have, and listen, and listen, and listen. But we have to come together, and we have to be unified, we have to have a, have a vision for this city. And so, I am asking everyone, you know, stop the negativity about our city, stop, you know, thinking that we're hopeless, 'cause there is hope. I believe. I believe in this city, and I believe that we can come together, be unified, have a oneness of mind. Oneness does not mean we have to agree with everything, but a oneness of mind and oneness of spirit. Lastly, I'd like to make a motion to, to do a resolution to memorialize Jack Sane.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to authorize the preparation of a resolution of memorializing Jack Sane. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Anything for Ms. Miles?
No, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I say what she, what she said? Just briefly on what Counselor Miles said, you know, after watching a lot of this stuff, I think it's just, I think we need to work on communication problems. Communication usually is the root of a lot of problems. And as folks can see, that the great people in the city have listened, and they've started taking steps towards helping the situation. And I'm glad to, glad to be a part of that, although be a very small part, 'cause I think the man upstairs is the very large part, and help guide all of us. I want to express my condolences to my good friend, Mr. Glenn, and the loss of his brother. But I want to speak about, Mr. Glenn invited me to, you know, share in this Martin Luther King Day festivities. Went to the dinner the Sunday evening. My brother was the, was one of the pastors there. We had a really great time, a really great meal. I can't believe how long Mr. Glenn's been doing this. And then, the march, I had a doctor's appointment, but I came after the march, plus I don't walk very well sometimes, just after the surgery, but, but I went to help take some people back, and as soon as I walked in the room at the Sherrill Allen Center, Mr. Glenn was standing up there talking with a microphone, which he does a really good job at. And he's handing me the microphone, which maybe I don't do quite as good of a job, but, and I really wasn't quite prepared, but I think it went well. But saying all this, I just want to kind of give Mr. Glenn a little bit of praise, 'cause, you know, some of us know what he does, some of us know the work that he does for people. I just can't say enough about what a good person he is, and his heart is big, and he cares about this city. And so, I, you know, I just felt the need and the urgency to give him a little bit of praise tonight for the things that he does, you know? So, I'm very proud to call myself, you know, a friend, and now somebody that works with Mr. Glenn here on the council. And the last thing that I have to say is, I want to remind people, we have a good crowd here, I want to remind people to be good to each other. That is the bottom line. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I have two things, one's mine, and the other one is Ms. Adams', but first off, I wanted to point out, we've been working for some time with the city's IT guy to get these dockets and all of the packets up on the city website, and effective with this meeting, they were available. I believe they go up Saturday on Thursday, late afternoon?
Thursday or Friday.
Thursday, late afternoon, or Friday morning, they are posted on the city's website. Go to the Department of Council and look for minutes and agendas. During the meeting, for the purpose of expediency, believe me, if you see one of these dockets and look at all the documents, we are not, and we will not, read every communication and ordinance in its entirety at a council meeting. If you think tonight's long, it would take hours to read all of them. But, so, for the purpose of the meeting, we read the caption of the communication, the caption of the ordinance, but in order to see the full ordinance, which has always been on record in the clerk's office, they will now be available on the city's website on Friday before the council meeting. So, that's something that has been worked on for quite a while, and has finally come to fruition, but that is available. And the other item I have is that, Ms. Adams asked me to give her 90 seconds to bring up one other item that she omitted during her privilege of the floor, I'm sorry, during her, Ms. Lani's business.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I did an oversight, memory loss. Mr. President, I would like to ask Mr. Elstro, if he could come forward and speak on this Chicago, Fort Wayne, and Eastern Railroad reinvestment.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Adams, President, and all of council. What I want to do is review with you a release from the Chicago, Fort Wayne, and Eastern Railroad. They released this Friday, and I'm not sure how well it's been covered in the local news, but I think it's fairly important to our community. The Chicago, Fort Wayne, and Eastern Railroad, CFNE, today announced a track improvement project enabling 40 mile-per-hour train speeds across the entire 315-mile rail line from Tolaston, Indiana, to Crestline, Ohio. Work includes leveling and aligning nearly 50 miles of track, replacing segments of rail, and installing more than 10,000 new railroad ties. Expected to be completed this month, the project will help alleviate rail freight congestion in the metro Chicago area by creating an alternate route for trains going to and from Chicago Rail Gateway. CFNE anticipates up to six additional eastbound freight trains per day over its line upon completion. The additional trains expect to carry energy products such as crude oil, bulk commodities such as grain, and other general merchandise, will be operated by the North for Southern Railroad, which has rights over the CFNE. Motorists and pedestrians should take note that trains will be running more frequently, and also at higher speeds on certain segments that were not 40 miles an hour before. Always obey signs and warning devices at railroad crossings, and cross only at designated crossings. This is a private sector investment enhancement, is an important piece of the transportation infrastructure in Indiana and Ohio. By increasing the number, by increasing the railroad capacity to transport freight, the improvement projects benefit existing customer and also makes CFNE corridor more attractive and potential for new customers and economic development opportunities. So, at least three main themes here. The CFNE is reinvesting in their east-west line, and that's a good thing. That's a good thing for us, that's a good thing for economic development. However, we will see more trains coming through this line at higher speeds, so we must make sure that our citizens and motor vehicle operators and pedestrians are vigilant. Please pay attention to the signals at the crossings. And again, with this private sector investment, this is a good thing. This line has been falling in disrepair, and this is a major investment, not by one railroad, but by two railroads.